Alright, so grab that handout or go online to grab that handout. But let's, let's begin with a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this congregation. I thank you for your word. I thank you for the book of Revelation, which points us to Jesus, helps us to see you more clearly, equips us for the life we live today, and points us to the promised hope that we have in Christ. And so Lord, I pray that you strengthen us through the hearing, through the interpretation, through the application of your word, for we ask it in the name of Jesus. And everyone said, amen. Alright, so as a, just a reminder, this is where you go to find all of the handouts, all of the materials. If there are, if there's anything new that is handed out, it will be right here. Okay? One other just thanks to offer out to everybody is I reached out to the head elder. His name is Kentao. So wave, say, say hi, hey Kentao. But I know that, did y'all know that the fellowship center is used for like 18 different things every Sunday? You know, from coffee to fellowship, to Bible study, to ordering me, to LWML bake sales coming up. And so our hope, my hope is that we can really kind of work together as a congregation so that we can be in the word together in this space. Well, that means we gotta really work together. Okay? And so, so I reached out to Kentao and the board of elders just to say, hey guys, I need your help. And because I can't be here and kind of helping, helping things coordinate back in the rest of the fellowship center. And so thanks to the board of elders for kind of being the, bouncer is not the right word, but that's the word that I'm coming up with. And so, but thank you because we really want to be a congregation where people, people love the word, they grow in their affection for Jesus, and they're equipped for, for the mission that he's called us to. So thank you to the board of elders for, for their service. Okay, um, before we get started, I wanted, I'm just curious, did anybody see this dude on the, on the news? Did anybody hear about this? So who, how many of you heard, know what I'm talking about? Okay, nobody emailed me, which I was shocked by, and said, hey pastor, you see this guy? And you know, here's the thing, is I don't know what kind of wacko is walking around to people's Ring Doorbell with Revelation 20 verses 1 through 15. But here's what I do know, is that the very first week, I had you write down, you know, what are you, what is a question you have? What do you hope to get out of going through Revelation? And many of you, I would say most of you, put at least this word in whatever you put. And the word was fear. So a lot of people have said, you know, I want to be in Revelation because I'm, I kind of read Revelation and I'm kind of afraid. Well, are there some things that are frightful in Revelation? Sure. But the outcome of our time in Revelation is really about pointing us to Jesus, the hope that we have in him. And that, and that although some bad things happen, and but we can have confidence in the personal work of Jesus Christ in the midst of it all. Okay? So I just say, you know, there's all of these things that happen that say, here's why we study the book of Revelation. Here's why we're in it. Because people like this are scaring people, and we have an opportunity to point people to Jesus during this time. Okay? So here's, the other thing is that I really want to give you some opportunities to build relationships with people at your table, meet new people. You know, if you're the, an eight o'clocker, I want you to meet a 10:30-er, right? And if you're a 10:30, I want you to meet an eight o'clocker. You know who you are. Okay? So, and build relationships. So I'm going to try very hard to give you something to discuss every week at your table, maybe five or 10 minutes. And so here's what I want you to discuss, is this concept. Now I know some of you are financed people, like I was. Who can give me a definition of dollar cost averaging? Just anybody give me a definition of it. Yes, Tim? I knew you were gonna, I knew you were gonna be there for me, Tim. Yes. So the definition is consistent investment over time, regardless of the highs and lows. You're not trying to time the market. You're just, it's just consistent investment over time, regardless of what's, what's happening. And then when you do that, what it does is it kind of averages out the highs and lows. Okay? And so historically, it's been proven that this works way better than trying to invest a lump sum at one time and trying to time the market. Okay? So here's what I want you to discuss at your table. I want you to think about this. So what are some examples of how a small investment over time makes a big difference in your life? Can you think of times where small investments make a big difference? So talk about that at your table for maybe five minutes. Think of some examples, and then we're gonna share them. Okay? Alright. So, share with me, just what, what are some examples in your life of small things that make a big difference? That you do it over time and it makes a big difference. What are some examples? Yes, Chris? Reading to your children when they're young every night. Good, good example. What's another one? Yeah, Patsy? Oh, hey, so see, there you go, Chris. That's what you meant, right? Patsy said, that's even better when you're reading the Bible to your children every night. And so that's what Chris meant, yeah. Lol? Sleepovers with grandchildren. Or do you mean like grandchildren sleepover with you? That's, okay, I get it. Yeah. Kathy? That's a great example. The Mite Boxes of LWML. You know, these little tiny boxes and how much, I can't remember what the number is. Yeah, tens of millions of dollars through little coins. And so Mite Boxes are a great example. Yes, anybody else? Yeah. Mentoring young people. That's a good one. Making investments over time. Yeah? The cheapest, there you go, a smile. That's good. Anybody else? Yes, Joanne? One hour Bible class per week. So you get into that rhythm over and over and over again. Yes? Love that. So he's just talking about being in the word on a regular basis. So you, you're in the word, like sometimes we like to do a deep dive, but that deep dive is important, but not, it's almost more important that we're in the word every single day, even if it's just 10 minutes. Yes, Sam? Tithing. Ooh! Yes! Hey, the, I wasn't even thinking about that one. That's a great one. Because here, what happens is God says, you know what? A small amount redeems the rest. Right? And so anybody else? Anybody else have a, have a, that one? Yes, Janet? Yes. Slow and steady wins the race, that's for sure. You know, I'm gonna, I'm thinking, I got marriage on the mind today because that's, that's the scripture reading for today in the message. But I'm gonna pick on the husbands here. A lot of times what happens is I'll talk to a couple, especially the husbands. And you husbands, I'm one of them, okay? We tend to think that, you know, something big is what it takes. So maybe your marriage is, is not where you want it to be. So I'll talk to a husband and they'll say, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna take my wife to, on this Caribbean adventure, and we're just gonna, or we're gonna do all of these big things. Right? Or I'm gonna buy her like 25 or 24 roses or something like that. Right? I'm gonna buy her a bunch of roses, because you know, that'll fix it all. And we tend to think, we tend to forget, that, not to say that Caribbean cruises and flowers aren't good. Okay? But it's the small thing done over time for the rest of your life. That's what really matters. And we get that, right? So, so we understand, right, that, that, like diet and exercise, right? Eating right is a small thing. So like for, for me, I was, I was struggling with like high blood pressure. You know, like, okay, well, I can eat a banana every day. I can do that. And then you eat a banana every day, and man, it starts to actually make a difference, right? Just eating a banana every day. It's staying away from salt and all that kind of stuff. Right? And these small things make a, make a big difference. But so many times what we do is we don't want to do that because we'll go to the gym and then we look and we say, that's not working. Right? But it's that small thing done over time. Okay, why do I bring that up? Well, the thing is, is that it works in the positive, but it also works in the negative. What do I mean by that? What I mean by that is I've never met an alcoholic who said to me, I woke up one day and just decided, I'm gonna be an alcoholic today. A person who's an alcoholic would say to you, I don't know how it happened. A person who is an addict would say, I didn't, I didn't decide to be an addict today. It just happened, and I don't know how it happened. I've never met a, met a spouse who said, I just woke up, decided, I'm gonna cheat on my spouse today. Never happened. And so these small things done over time that you either make an investment in or withdraw in, they add up over time. So, why do I say that? Because I want you to grab this handout that has the seven churches. We're about ready to get into chapter two of Revelation, chapter two, that is. And here's the thing, is when this letter from Jesus that he's given to the angel for the church, do you think that these churches were surprised by what Jesus had to say to them? I would say that they were shocked. In other words, how, so we're gonna get into Ephesus. Okay? So Ephesus, the sin of Ephesus is you have left your first love. Do you think that they even knew that they had left their first love? Probably not. And how do you leave your first love? Slowly over time. And it happens with one little compromise, another little compromise, another little compromise. And all of a sudden, before you know it, now Jesus is saying to you through his angel, you've, you've abandoned your first love. And you're like, wait a minute, what happened? You know, we're a growing congregation. We've got all of these things going on. I thought we were doing great. And yet you say that you have this against us. And so it's these small, little, tiny things that are done over time. And so all of these congregations, just slowly but surely, you get away from Jesus. You get away from the mission of God, and you get to a point where you need to be called back. So take a look at this, this handout here. And what I've given to you is we're gonna go through, not all of these today. We're only gonna spend time on Ephesus. But all of these, so you see the local detail, then you'll see the image of Christ. How does Christ seen by the, how does he identify himself? And then you have a good, you have something, hey, you have, here's what's good that's happening. There's only one congregation that there wasn't anything good, which their name is Laodicea. So there's nothing good there. Okay? Then here's what is bad that's happening. Here's your sin, then a call to repent, and then a promise. So all of these congregations, all of their sins, here's the deal, is they are sins that only believers can commit. Does that make sense? So there are sins that believers can commit, and there's sins that unbelievers commit. Right? So in other words, you can't abandon your first love if you didn't have the first love to begin with. Makes sense? So these, all of these, the bad, these are all things that only Christians, these are sins that only Christians can commit. So another one would be Smyrna, which we'll get to next week. You know, they're afraid of suffering on account of Christ, or some hold to the teachings of Balaam. Right? So you have this, this idea that these congregations, they are, they are sinning against the Lord Jesus, and they're only things that, that Christians can commit. Okay? So why these seven letters? So we've already talked about this. We've talked about how the Lord Jesus shows himself, reveals himself in chapter one. Reveals himself as a priestly king. So on the one hand, you have the king. He has authority over all creation, and he's a priest, full of grace and mercy and truth. And then what happens is, remember, John sees him, and then he falls dead as a doornail. And then, and then Jesus reaches down and says, don't be afraid. So this idea of what's happening here, the purpose of these letters is to serve as what we would call in the church, confession and absolution. So for those of you that maybe you wonder to yourself, why do we have, like, let's say, in the service, why do we stand up and confess our sins and to be assured that Jesus Christ by his blood and by his authority and righteousness declares to you and to me that you are forgiven on account of himself? Why do we do that? Why do we do it at the time that we do it in the service? It is so, and this is just historical Christianity, it is so that you're prepared to hear the word. So otherwise, because of that sin, so sin, think of it like a, like a, like you got earplugs in, and you can't hear the word of God. So what happens is the way that the, that the seven letters to the churches function in the book of Revelation is a call to repentance because the revelation, in Revelation, does not begin until chapter four. So that's when really the book of Revelation begins, is in chapter four. So how does, so why do we have these, these letters? It's to call his people to repentance so that they are ready and prepared to receive the revelation. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay? Alright, so these will give you just kind of an idea of, of all of the different churches. And we'll walk through these churches a little bit each, each week. Next week, we'll probably do Smyrna and Pergamum. Alright. Questions at this point in time before we move on? Anybody? Yes? So Rosie's question is, what is the scripture that is, that's there to say, we need confession and absolution before we can hear God's word? There's not really a scripture for that, but we're gonna get into this in terms of every single time that Revelation says, at the end of every single one of the letters, says, he who has ears, let him hear. That is really important, and we'll, and we'll get into that. Okay? Because when it says, so like, we'll, we'll get to this place in Psalm 115, says that when you go after idols, when you go after anything but Jesus Christ, what happens to you? You go after these idols and who can neither see, nor hear, nor speak. And what happens to you when you go after, after idols who can neither hear, nor see, nor speak? You can neither hear, nor see, nor speak, nor speak. Okay? That's the whole point, is that you become like what you worship. So we've talked about already that, that in Revelation, it's really important, worship is a central theme. Who or what do you worship? Okay? So we'll get, we'll, we'll talk about that more. Any other questions before we get into Ephesus? Anybody been to Ephesus, by the way? So Leonard and Cheryl been to Ephesus. Bill, thank you for, you gave me a book about Ephesus. And I, I've never been to Ephesus, but it's one of the places that, I've been to Jerusalem, but I've never been to Ephesus. And so here's just a little bit about Ephesus. So Ephesus was one of the larger cities, probably either the third or fourth largest city in the Roman Empire at the time. And it had, it boasted, one of the seven wonders of the ancient world was the Temple of Artemis, was there at the time that Paul and John were there. So this is what that would have looked like. Anybody been to Athens and seen the Parthenon? Okay, so the Parthenon, or the, the temple to, of Artemis was four times the size of Parthenon. So it's gigantic. And obviously there's, it's in ruins, and there's like one, one of those pillars. That's the only thing that's, that's still there. So this is a, this is Artemis. This is the, this is called the Lady of Ephesus. Now what you're gonna see in her, she's like the goddess of hunting. But you'll see also in the, nobody, people are kind of not sure if the, if those are breasts or if they're eggs, but the whole point is that Artemis is the goddess of fertility, of creation, of childbirth, of all of that. Okay? So with that in mind, here is the, here is the stadium. So some of Paul's companions were there. They would, all this would have been like the central place in Ephesus. And so I want to just give you some historical background here from the scriptures. So turn your Bibles to Acts, chapter 19. And this is verse 21. Acts, chapter 19, verse 21. So Paul, the apostle Paul, spent more time in Ephesus than in any other congregation that he planted. Probably the reason for that, it was, is it was central. So you could go over to Greece and get to like Corinth and Thessalonica, or you could get to, to Asia, which is, which Ephesus was the port for Asia, and you get all the, all to, to the, all of the other churches that we're gonna go through. So just a real hub for him and for, for ministry there. So Acts, chapter 19, verse 21. Now after these events, so what happened is Paul comes in and, and there is, he's teaching in the hall of Tyrrhenis. We don't really know where that's at. That's in verse nine. And then you have the sons of Skiva that happened. So lots of things happening in Ephesus. So it says, now after these events, Paul resolved in the spirit to pass through Macedonia and Achaia and go to Jerusalem, saying, after I have been there, I must also see Rome. And having sent into Macedonia two of his helpers, Timothy, you know Timothy, and Erastus, he himself stayed in Asia for a while. About that time, there arose no little disturbance concerning the way. So this is the earliest Christians were taught, it was talked about, these are disciples of the way. Verse 24. For a man named Demetrius, a silver smith, who made silver shrines of Artemis. So probably not silver statues of this person or this idol, but more like probably little houses that you can put in your home, something like that. So little temples, little shrines. Brought no little business to the craftsman. These he gathered together with the workmen in similar trades and said, men, you know from this wealth, from this business, we have our wealth. And you see and hear that not only in Ephesus, but in almost all of Asia, this Paul has persuaded and turned away a great many people, saying that gods made with hands are not gods. And there is, there is danger, not only that this trade of ours may come into disrepute, but also that the temple of the great goddess Artemis may be counted as nothing, and that she may even be deposed from her magnificence, she whom all Asia and the world worship. When they heard this, they were enraged and were crying out, great is Artemis of the Ephesians. So the city was filled with confusion, and they rushed together into the theater, dragging with them Gaius and Aristarchus Macedonians, who were Paul's companions in travel. But when Paul wished to go in among the crowd, the disciples would not let him. And even some of the Asiarchs, who were friends of his, sent to him and were urging him not to venture into the theater. Now some cried out one thing, some another, for the assembly was in confusion, and most of them did not know why they had come together. Some of the crowd prompted Alexander, whom the Jews had put forward. And Alexander, motioning with his hand, wanted to make a defense to the crowd. But when they recognized that he was a Jew, for about two hours, they, they, they all cried out with one voice, great is Artemis of the Ephesians. And when the town clerk had quieted the crowd, he said, men of Ephesus, who is there who does not know that the city of the Ephesians is temple keeper of the great Artemis and the sacred stone that fell from the sky? What does that mean? The sacred stone that fell from the sky? There's a lot of confusion about that. So I'm just gonna tell you this. I don't know. I don't know what it is. There's a lot of, a lot of opinions on that, and we're just gonna keep going. Okay? Verse 36. Seeing that, that, seeing them that these things cannot be denied, you ought to be quiet and do, do nothing rash. For you brought these men here who have neither, who are neither For you have brought these men here who have neither, who are neither sacrilegious nor blasphemers of our goddess." Isn't that interesting? They are neither sacrilegious nor blasphemers, yet back in verse 26, what does Paul say? And he says the same thing in Acts, chapter 17. "Gods made with hands are not gods." Right? So how can they say on the one hand that Paul is saying gods made with hands are not gods? And yet he is, he is neither sacrilegious nor a blasphemer? That make sense? So let's keep going. "If therefore Demetrius and the craftsmen with him have a complaint against anyone, the courts are open and there are pearl consuls. Let them bring charges against one another. But if you seek anything further, it shall be settled in the regular assembly, for we really are in danger of being charged with rioting today, since there is no cause that we can give to justify this commotion." And when he had said these things, he dismissed the assembly. So what I want you to just see here is number one is it's a wonderful reminder that the word of God under the spirit of God can accomplish the mission of God. So here Paul goes into, into Athens and he, he's standing and he, this is Acts, chapter 17, and he, and he, he says, you know, "What you declare is unknown. I declare to you this day that the God of heaven and earth." And he's not, not, doesn't live in a house made, made by hands. Right? And so he just lets the word of God, kind of does the mic drop, right? And then just walks out. And he trusts the word of God to do the work that the word does. Okay? So here again, you have, you have Ephesus and Paul is just preaching and teaching. He's in the, he's in the hall of Tyrrhenus. We don't really know where that's at. But he's, he's doing it all the time and he's preaching and he's teaching the word and letting the word do what the word does. That I think is a great witness and something that we can have great confidence in knowing that Paul just preached and taught the word of God. And then the spirit of God went to work on the hearts and minds of people. And then guess what happened? Turned the world upside down and brought people to faith in Christ. Okay? So I just want you to see that, that even the people were like, you know, he's not pre, he's, he's just preaching the word of God and the word of God is saying, yeah, Artemis, she is an idol that is a, that is demonic. Turn from that, repent and have faith in Christ. Okay? So that's what's happening in, in Ephesus. All right. Questions on that? Make sense? All right. So that's just a little bit of, of the background, historical background of Ephesus. Because again, these are all, these are all real churches. These are all real people. Last week, Rosie brought up a question about the angel. So let's turn our bibles to Revelation, chapter two. Beginning in verse one. So it says, "To the angel of the church in Ephesus, write." So if I would say about half the people, if you ask them that are biblical scholars and write commentaries and big thick books with lots of words, about half of them would say that to the angel means to the pastor. The other half would say, no, 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 no. In Revelation, angel never refers to a human being. So again, we talked about this in, on the very first week, we talked about hermeneutics. So if you are making the move to say, no, no, the angel is a person, it's a, it's the pastor of the church there, you gotta understand why are you making that move? So how I would say is that what's consistent in the book of Revelation is that angel never refers to a human being. It always refers to an angelic being. Okay? And so that's how I'm going to understand it. Yes, sir? Okay. Go ahead Chuck. Please do that. Yes? Yeah. So for those of you on the, that are over here, you didn't hear that. Every time the angel comes and announces something, guess what happens? People fall on their face and they cower and they're like, oh my goodness, so shepherds. And Chuck says, I'm sorry, I don't cower in your presence. Good. You should not. Right? And a great, great example of that. But again, the, the, the times that we see these angels, they are not a, they're not referred to as human beings. Now the book of Hebrews does say, sometimes you were doing, you were going to do what? You're going to entertain angels and you're completely unaware that you did. Right? Okay. So, so that does happen. Anybody here seen an angel before? Okay. So is it possible? I've heard many stories of people who, who saw an angel and is that possible? Sure it is. But what we see in the scriptures is that again, these are people who are coming to, to aid, to minister to, and, but in the book of Revelation, the way I'm going to look at it is going to be, let's ma, I'm going to maintain consistency with how the book of Revelation describes an angel or defines an angel, and that is as a angelic being. Yes? So the, so the question is, is it possible that it could be, it could be an allegorical, something allegorical and just as a messenger? So just a random messenger? Well, the answer to that is sure. So the word angel just simply means messenger. So that's what it means in, in the Old Testament. It's what it means, it's what it means in the New Testament. It means messenger. But here in the book of Revelation, we're going to see that these are heavenly angelic beings. So yes, Terry? Yes. So, so Terry was saying that sometimes people are going to say, it's really just the, so if I'm hearing you right, people would say that angel is just another word for the Holy Spirit. That it's really the Holy Spirit, but just, well, we're going to substitute the word angel here. So again, I, I would say in the book of Revelation, we're going to see lots of angels that are going to be delivering the prophetic message. And, and so the way that, that I'm going to encourage you to think about them is as an actual angel. Okay? That make sense? Okay. So Ephesians, chapter two, verse one. "To the angel of the church in Ephesus, in Ephesus, write, 'The words of him who holds the seven stars in his right hand, who walks among the seven golden lampstands.'" So again, if you weren't here last week, who are the seven stars? The seven angels. Who are the seven lampstands? The seven churches. Okay? So who, who holds the seven stars and the seven golden lampstands in his hand? What does that mean? He has what? Authority. Right? So he is over them. Now again, we have to remember the vision that we get of this priestly king in chapter one. So Jesus is here. Yes, he is here to speak a word of law, but he's also there to speak a word of gospel to them. Okay? Both of them are needed. Okay? All right. Verse two. "I know your works, your toil and your patient endurance, and how you cannot bear with those who are evil, that have tested those who call themselves apostles and are not, and found them to be false." So I want you to, if you have a Bible, underline the word patient endurance. This is going to come up multiple times in Revelation. And then turn in your Bible to Romans, chapter five. So this is a really important word for Paul. So Romans, chapter five, verse three. He says this, "More than that, we rejoice in our sufferings, knowing, knowing that suffering produces endurance." Here's the same word, endurance, patient endurance. That's the same word in Greek. "And endurance produces character, and not just a, you're a good person, but the word here for character that Paul uses over and over again is a tried and tested and true Christian character. You can be depended upon. Okay? And character produces hope and hope does not put us to shame because God's love has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who has been given to us." So this patient endurance produces in you a character. It produces hope in you. And so the point is, is that we are to lean into that patient endurance. All right. Then let's talk about a little bit about false apostles. "So have tested those who call themselves apostles and are not, and found them to be false." So jump down to verse six. We're going to get to this in a minute, but I just want you to, want to see, here's an example. Talks about the Nicolaitans. So most people believe that this is a sect within Christianity, a, an apostate sect. So, so apart from salvation in Christ. Okay? That kind of found, found their way into the church from a guy named Nicholas. And so this would be back in, in Acts, chapter six. Remember Stephen, they selected people and Nicholas was one of them. Who knows if that's the case, but here's what's happening is that they're testing this person named Nicholas and saying, wait a minute. No, no, no. You are not, you are false. You're a false teacher. And so there, and so this would be an example of that. Okay? So, okay, verse three. "So I know you, I, I know you are enduring patiently," that same word again, "and bearing up for my name's sake, and you have not grown weary." Verse four. "But I have this against you, that you have abandoned the love you had at first." Now I want you to again, underline the word abandoned. So do that, underline that word and then turn over in your Bible to 1 Corinthians, chapter seven. And it's verse 11. So this is Paul's teaching on marriage. So verse 10, starting verse 10. "To the married I give this charge, not I, but the Lord; the wife should not separate from her husband," verse 11. "But if she does, she should remain unmarried or else be reconciled to her husband. And the husband should not divorce his wife." So the word here for divorce is the word that is used here in Revelation, chapter two. So it's not just that you have, so we could say it this way. "But I have this against you, that you have divorced yourself from the love that you had at first." So we're going to talk about in worship today, we'll talk about Ephesians, chapter five, and the importance of marriage. So how God sees himself in relationship with his bride. That's how he sees it. Okay? And, and, and Paul sees it that way as well. Right? This mystery of marriage is profound and I'm saying that it refers to Christ and the church. Okay? So now you have this word, not just abandoned, but actual divorce. All right. Verse five. "Remember therefore from where you have fallen, and do the works you did at first. If not, I will come to you and remove your lampstand from its place, unless you repent." So again, okay. So let's go back to verse five. "Remember therefore from where you have fallen, and do the works you did at first." So do the works you did at first. So for you grammar people, this is one of those where, okay, what does he mean? What is meant here? So you could either translate this, maybe some of you have this translation in your Bible. Some of you say it might be, "Do the works you did at first." That'd be an okay translation. Some of your bibles might say, "Do the most important works." You see the difference there? There's a difference between do the most important things and, and do the things you first did. So which one is it? I would say it's both. It's both the things that you did at first and do the things that were most important. So how many of you are married? Most of you. What happens when you're married is, you know, when you first get married and when you first kind of fall in love, right? Do you let little things bother you? Not as much as you do now. Hey, I'm looking in the mirror here. So just. But what happens is we let all of these little other things get in the way. And what happens is we forget of the, the, what's most important in our life. We forget the things that, you know, you forget, I'm again, speaking as husband, as a husband here. You kind of win her, right? But then you stop pursuing her. Cause I've already won. Or am I the only one, guys? David says, you're on an island. I'm up here by myself, right? But you stop pursuing your wife. Why would you do that? Why would I do that? Why would you stop dating your wife? Why would you stop, uh, stop, you know, when she, remember, remember when you were like first dating, you were first married, you know? Your wife walks in or she, you know, she, her phone, her phone number, she calls you and you're like, oh, it's, it's her. And now she picks, you pick up the phone, that's the wife. Again, am I the only one? Love you babe. But the call to us is, I mean, again, I'm sure for all of you, there was a time where you just could not get enough of God's word. That you couldn't wait to get up in the morning and pray. That you couldn't wait to come to worship. And now what is it? Oh man. Okay. I'm going to do this again. Why, why do I even do this anymore? Right? And you get that way a little bit over time. And it happens not only with our relationships with the most important people in this world, but it also happens in our relationship with Jesus. So what are the, what are the, what are the most important works? So if we understand them as the, the first and foremost things and, and things to do in your relationship with Jesus, what would those be? Anybody? What do you think? Say again? Putting him first? How, how do you do that? Like, what does that mean? Like, how do you do that practically? Like you get up in the morning and how do you put him first? You pray? Okay. So spiritual disciplines? Spending time in the word, praying, coming to worship, being in a small group, all those things. Good. Right? What else? Yes? Okay. So this is a, I can't summarize. Thank you for that. I can't summarize everything that, that he said, but I'm going to say it this way. And, and so I'm going to go back to last week. Remember this stuff? Okay. So here's the challenge. Is that the first works, the first thing is yes, to So here's the challenge, is that the first works, the first thing is, yes, to love Jesus. But to love Jesus is also to do what? To do what he says. To go and make disciples of all nations. And we've talked about the fact that we are not doing great at that as a church in general, right? And so the point is, is that the mission of God in the book of Revelation is at stake. And what he's doing is, he is disciplining his people. He is allowing, and dare I even say causing, we're gonna wrestle with this, his church, his people, to go through some significant refinement. Why is that? Because they have abandoned their first love. They have abandoned Jesus Christ, and they have abandoned the mission of God. And they no longer share the gospel with people. Why? Because I've gotten comfortable. So like, for example, if you've ever been part of a church plant before? That just starts, and like, you know, they're setting up chairs, and I mean, they're in a gymnasium. I mean, everybody's coming together. And it's like, "We've gotta do this." And then what happens is, you kinda start, and you get into this rhythm, and you get comfortable, and you're like, "Yeah, somebody else can do it." Right? Happens all the time. And then what happens is, as that congregation gets a little older, gets a little older, gets a little bit more comfortable, they stop actually sharing the gospel, and they stop... I shouldn't say "stop," but they compromise their belief in the gospel as being the power of God into salvation. And they get away from it. And so why would God let his, or cause his church to go through that pain? Because he loves people. That's why. Is because he knows, you and I, he knows that what's gonna happen is, we'll just sit here on our duff and do nothing, and be real comfortable, wait for Jesus to come back, all the while, while people are apart from him, destined in hell. Yes? Yes. Yeah, Steve said, "Identify purpose." And so the book of Revelation is gonna call us back to the purpose, not that we gave to ourselves, but that Jesus has given to us. And he's gonna call us back to that in kinda painful ways, over and over and over again. All right, let me round out this letter here. So verse 6, Revelation, chapter 2, verse 6. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to this. "If not, I will come to you and remove your lampstand from its place, unless you repent." So what does that mean? What it means is, we talked about, the lampstand represents the sevenfold presence of Christ through the Holy Spirit in that place. And so then what happens? He will remove himself, he will no longer be present in that congregation through the Holy Spirit. So that's what you were saying, you were talking about, David, is you no longer sense the work of the Holy Spirit in that place, or they're no longer heeding the movement of the Holy Spirit in that congregation. And then guess what happens? These congregations try to do all these things, and they're just working and working and working, and nothing's happened, okay? So that's what that's talking about. So verse 6, yes. Immediate judgment. So, yeah, so I will come to you... How does it say it? Tell me what it says, Nancy. Oh, it says in like parentheses, and that means immediate judgment? Oh, in the notes, in the notes, yes. So it is judgment, yes? Yes, yes, I'm gonna, we can, I'm gonna come back to that next week. So let's go to verse 6. "Yet this you have: You hate the works of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate." So the Nicolaitans are people who say, "Ah, let's eat, drink, and be merry." They are people who practice sexual immorality, believing that, you know what? The gospel of Jesus Christ frees us to do all kinds of things, right? We're free in Christ, right? Now, good thing we don't have that in our country today, okay? We have it in spades, okay? So now here's what I wanna, verse 7. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says in the churches. To the one who conquers, I will grant to eat of the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God." So here's where, last place I want you to go before we wrap up, is Psalm 115. So this goes back to what Rosie was saying. So Psalm 115. So when the Bible talks about, "listen up," or "he who has an ear, let him hear," it is a call to repent. So verse 15, or I'm sorry, Psalm 115, verse 4. "So their idols are silver and gold, the work of human hands; they have mouths but do not speak, eyes but do not see; they have ears but do not hear, noses but do not smell; they have hands but do not feel, feet but do not walk; and they do not make a sound in their throat. Those who make them become like them." So there, especially in the Old Testament, there is a great teaching that the word gives us about the fact that you become what you worship. So Jeremiah, chapter 2, says that, "People went out after worthlessness and became worthless." So this idea is of, "he who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says in the churches." It's a call to repent. It's a call to come back, it's a call to say, "Ah, you know what? I'm not ready to hear the Revelation, starting in chapter 4, until I've repented, and I've been assured that God loves me and forgives me of my sins. Now I'm ready to receive the Revelation." That make sense? All right, all right. So let's pray, and then next week, we're gonna get into Smyrna and Pergamum. All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this congregation. I thank you for the opportunity just to be in your word and meditate on it a little bit. Lord, I pray that your Holy Spirit, through your word, would have its way with us and mold us and shape us in the image of Christ. We pray in his name, amen. All right, thank you, everybody. And let me know if there's some ways that we can make this kinda in-person experience better, and we'll do that. Thank you, God bless you, we'll see you next week.